Seven o'clock, please, for the mic loop, Eli will be playing.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, as you can tell, I don't know, move the camera so we can, the big surprise. We have some awesome students here with us. Okay, alright, yeah, and those are also students and these are also awesome students. And we'll, we'll let you explain while we're, why we're here and why you're here. And then I'll turn the time over to Brower.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Um, I'm the junior drum major for the band and uh, Principal Sturdivan asked me to um, organize something so that we can honor Ms. Danielson and uh, play something for her. Um, and so we went about three weeks searching around trying to figure out what we're gonna do and how we're gonna like honor Danielson. It's never, it's impossible to give her enough. Um, for how much she gives to us.
Oh.
So um, we were thinking, um, our first idea was like a brass ensemble thing, but um, we didn't want to, I guess, I don't know. And so we asked Danielson what was her favorite song that we've ever played for as long as I've been in bands and we didn't want to put a whole entire orchestra into it. Um, so then we asked her her favorite song overall, uh, and she couldn't, still couldn't pick one. Um, so uh, we asked her her favorite band and she said U2 was one of her top ones. Um, so in honor of Ms. Danielson, we will be playing um, With or Without You from U2.
Wow, alright, when you're ready, we're ready for you.
I'm gonna be counting this off.
Ready?
Uh, let me skip.
One, two, one, two, three.
That was awesome. So real quick, before I turn the time over to Mr. Brower, would you, each of you share a little bit of, about why you think Mrs. Danielson deserves this great honor?
Jacob, the song.
Okay, um, band is my favorite class and every single time I come into it, I look forward to it every single day. It's my last period. I wish it wasn't. I wish I had it all day. And I think Ms. Danielson is a big part of why I enjoy it so much. Just the community that she's built around band and the class is just amazing.
Uh, I kind of agree. Um, I mean, it's my only class at the high school because I had a big running start. But it's definitely the best part of my day is getting to come to band and hang out with all my friends and play music. And then come to the basketball games and the football games and everything and play music at those. Like, it's a lot of fun and I love band. So uh, and the one who made that, makes band for us is Danielson, so.
Aww.
Thank you, Danielson. Uh, Danielson, you got me on euphonium and I'm very thankful for that and you just make bands so fun. And you're awesome, so.
Uh, yeah, again, basically piggyback off of all they said was, Danielson makes the band great. She's the one that actually got me on the trombone, got me off percussion. Um, going back to my roots. Uh, and uh, one of the major things I like to think about was when she said, you kind of look like a trombonist and we don't need any more percussionists, so you're gonna be a, play trombone now. She isn't wrong. I love trombone. She uh, she, she taught me and got me caught up in it less than about half a year, uh, in so little time. She is such an amazing teacher. Makes my day so great. She's getting us to Florida and putting all that work into fundraising and trying to make sure that we can do that trip and it's so much fun. We just love Danielson.
Couldn't do better than that.
So I'm gonna actually have you come up right here, on my, come join me and let's put you right here. On board, welcome. Okay, well, as evidenced by those who make the most difference in our lives, our students, we're grateful for the, the chance that we've had to hear you and hear. Sometimes we have, we honor people, but we don't get to see what they do, like what they produce. And so when we see what they produce, then it makes us proud. Congratulations. So it's my honor to recognize and celebrate the extraordinary contributions of Ms. Susie Danielson, whose dedication, creativity, and passion have profoundly strengthened music education in the Eatonville School District. As our band instructor, uh, she starts her day at zero hour early with our jazz band and she never really ends because we know basketball games and football games and stuff all go into the evening. So she puts her heart and soul into it. It's not just a job, it's who she is and what she does. So she has brought far more than musical expertise to our students. She's brought opportunity, as we heard tonight. Through her tireless efforts, she has secured multiple grants that have expanded access to instruments, enhanced music, uh, learning experiences, and enriched the overall music programs across our schools. These grants have not only supported the growth of our ensembles, but have also endorsed for students who might not otherwise have the opportunity to explore and develop their music talents, or for us, a budget that would support the acquisition of certain instruments and other materials necessary to really have a robust band. Susie's vision for what music can provide, community, confidence, joy, and discipline, and some of those tonight as well, shines through every program she builds and every student that she supports. Her commitment to excellence is matched only by her commitment to our kids. Because of her leadership, our music programs continue to thrive, inspire, and uplift. We are deeply grateful for Ms. Danielson's dedication and the countless hours she has invested in creating meaningful lasting opportunities for our students. These are talents that they'll take their whole life through. Uh, her music is, her work in music is a testament to the power of one person's passion to transform an entire program. And we really appreciate the way you're growing the program from when I came here in 2023 until now. It's just amazing, you know, how you packed the house. And uh, yeah, not only in student numbers, but also in, in those who, who support students. Um, she makes a real difference in the lives of our young people. Thank you, Susie, for your remarkable service to our district and for the music memories and opportunities you have brought to our community. We're proud to have you as a part of the Eatonville School District family. And we have a certificate here for you. We hope that you, could you just illustrate a little bit about how much we care about what you've done? I know, just give a picture here. And maybe we can have one more in front of the board. Can you stand next to her?
Stand next to Karen. Yeah, come back to stand next to Karen, because you're terrible.
Are you then? Alright, I'm gonna actually get a little bit more behind the scenes, so I am a little more centered. There we go. Look happy. Smile. Do you want to picture in front of your kids?
Yes.
Alright guys, Jacob, put it in there. Don't act like.
Come on, Jacob.
He's not gonna bite you.
I gotta make sure I can actually see.
Alright, everybody smile again. Thanks, guys.
And then, last but not least,
Yeah.
we have a symphony bar here for you and it's encased in the Cruiser Fight song.
Oh.
Thank you so much.
Susie, did you want to say anything? You probably don't, but I'm gonna offer you the opportunity to show us some love.
You know, I was just um, saying the other day, last night, actually, when we were at the basketball, after the basketball game and how I said to these fine individuals and everybody else who was there after the game, I said, you know, I'm gonna tell you something right now. I love all you guys. I love coming to work. It's not even work. I just love coming here. And then I said, now you need to go home. Go ahead. The fact of the matter that I just, I love what I do. I love being here every day and, I mean, working with you, it's just great. Sometimes I pinch myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amy, would you have anything you wanted to add?
No, she's amazing. I think, I would just echo what, what Superintendent Brower said, just about, you know, it's always hard, I think, when we, you know, we transition into a program and um, just the growth that we've seen in the students in terms of their performance, like as a band and what they sound like. And then also just um, the numbers, you know, kids voting with their feet in terms of wanting to be part of the program. So I have really appreciated to see that growing, but. And it's been kind of a, a treat for me this year because I've had, I've been able to actually be Susie's evaluator this year. So getting to spend a lot of really purposeful time in her classroom and she's the real deal. It's good stuff. So, we're lucky to have her.
Thank you. And I, as a parent of five children who had Mrs. Danielson, four, I think my youngest, you were home with your kiddos.
Four in a year.
Four in a year, yeah. My gratitude, generate, you impact generations. And so thank you so much for all that you do and dedication. We love you.
We do.
Anybody else have anything they want to say before?
No.
Okay. I wanted to um, thank you all for coming, but also offer the opportunity to not have to stay through a whole meeting. If you're here for this session, um, thank you so much and we'll give you this tomorrow to transition.
Thank you.
And I'm assuming they can come back and pick this up tomorrow if they want to, or is it all your personal stuff or does it go to the bedroom?
All personal.
Oh, they need to take it home. Alright.
Kids, you guys can use that back.
Yeah, go through that door. You're welcome to that room. It's dangerous out there.
Like grab a bucket of water?
Yes.
You guys have like a band or anything?
Blue one. I don't think that's.
Like getting water or like actually?
Technically it's time to. It's acceptable.
Okay, I think the transition is gone through. So I'm gonna kind of bring us all back.
Okay.
Bring us all back and we're gonna turn the time over to our student reps who also, um, due to weather conditions and finals and various student priorities, we're gonna ask them to share and then invite them also to leave a statement.
Thank you. I don't have that much to report since we're heading towards winter break. Some kind of stuff going on sort of middle school. Kindness gang is still going strong and accepting new members, which is really exciting. Um, kindness gang and with Eatonville High School students are also working on some exciting new projects over the next couple of months. Um, I'll have more information to come later. It's not really finalized yet. Um, some student activities and events was the holiday band concert on the first, which I heard was packed. Um, their holiday performances from the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Um, some student ideas and challenges are incorporating more kindness at Eatonville Middle School and some of the ideas are making more assemblies more accessible, um, making more prize rewards for kindness and then also trying to influence the younger kids types of grade rates, um, and starting that idea early. Um, and then some celebrations and recognitions. I wanted to celebrate Mr. Sneezak, his hard work and supporting leadership state with all their ideas and future plans. And then also all the young students and the kindness gang for their hard work and passion. I know that's a lot of work that they put on outside of school and I'm happy that they're doing that. Um, some updates for Running Start and the Skill Center. Pierce College was recently awarded $5.5 million in federal grants to expand student support services. The support includes low income first generation or those who have documentation disabilities. Um, that's really exciting. I know there's a lot of new ideas coming up on how to use that money, so I'm excited to see where that goes. Um, Pierce College, too, also has recognized Transgender Day of Remembrance on November 27th. This celebration has been going on the last three years and remembers those who have been lost in anti-trans violence and discrimination. And I know that a lot of students are incorporated in that, which is really great. And then students are also finishing finals this week, which I know is really stressful and everyone's looking forward to a nice long break. Um, and then some activities is the winter celebration that was on the fifth and the winter concert was sold out on Friday. The concert began at 7:30 and was a big success. And it was conducted by Dr. Kenneth Owen and Dr. Joseph P. Scott. Um, some student concerns or feedbacks. Some students in Road to Running Start are concerned about more support from high school counselors and potentially Running Start specific classes at Pierce College. A lot of the, um, classes are just general college classes and I know a lot of students are looking for that in-between ground, maybe something specific to Running Start. Um, some students are also struggling with the adaptation to Pierce College's grading and how different it is from Eatonville, going from like a letter grade to a GPA scale and then also finding out that, you know, you can't retake tests. A lot of grades aren't dropped. Um, so that's a very difficult transition for a lot of people. Um, this transition is difficult since there's little to no guidance going in on Running Start because a lot of the college counselors are dealing with not Running Start students and they're dealing with actual college students. Um, some students also mentioned that it's difficult, difficult to get guidance on, but all problems are barriers since the counselors at both schools are busy and juggling a lot of students. Some upcoming school events is at the Skill Center. They're having a Pierce County Skill Center Holiday Market on the 13th. And there's gonna be a holiday market with a lot of vendors and booths, as well as pictures with Santa. And then some celebration and recognitions. I wanted to celebrate the Running Start students for their hard work going through finals this week. I know that was really stressful and looking forward to a long winter break.
Thank you. Um, I would, could I please ask you to um, work with Cassie and we'd love to have, I'm, I'm speaking, I think I, all of you will agree, I would love to see the kindness gang come and do a presentation on the month that we're doing SEL. And um, we have a, a board calendar, but if you could be the connection with them.
What month is that?
Um, Cassie though. And she can work it out as we, yeah. Yeah, she'll communicate with you with that. And then I also want to recognize that um, Running Start is intended to be a college experience. And so it is, it is tricky and um, students have to be aware that when they go to Running Start, that that's what they're signing up for. And so thank you for sharing that. Now they should be aware and you can continue to share with them that as they go to Running Start and they take on college level courses, they're going to face college level issues that they're getting. And it's a great preparation for university, so.
Yeah, I apologize for my little chuckle out loud. Um, um, we just had this finals conversation with somebody I know very well that's related to me that knows. So and, and there was a conversation earlier about Running Start that we, we've had as a.
And psychologists are just like, oh, I think we take the class as much time and it's just a reminder that.
It's a reminder.
Going to college as a high school student, it's not like here, you get this in between. So I think kids are just kind of getting lost in that transition, but I think it's important to just keep reminding them that serious and take it serious because.
Does it mean something? That's right. That's great.
And there's a reminder, one of our student peers were working on our preparation for life. Just nothing quite like preparation for life, for life, when you face real life.
And you have to learn the hard way.
Yes, that's the best lessons, the most, no, they're not always the best lessons, but they're remembered the longest and most impact. Thank you. Eli?
So, grits, um, I, they finally came back to me. Oh, I reached out and I was like, that's amazing. But um, their mobile pumpkin patch that they did, um, giving out over 200 pumpkins.
Wow, that's outstanding.
I'd say it was pretty successful. Um, and then also we just had the state legislative visit. Was it three? Yeah, um, and Mr. Morris said that that was pretty good and he enjoyed that. And then um, right now students are learning about particle and thermal energy, which I just wanted to throw in because I thought it was really cool.
That is.
So they're, they're learning how to build shelter, um, to take care of themselves when they want. Um, and then Warehouser, they had a math family night on December 2nd. Um, having a PT holiday shop, which sounded pretty cool, where students are able to um, buy gifts for their families or friends at a formal prices for them, since they're small. Um, and then Warehouser is gonna be hosting three events, Stuff the Sockin', Giving Treat, and Serial Drive, which we're gonna do in the end of, sounds interesting. And then um, all the cereal boxes from the cereal drive are gonna be made into a big cavity and match it with a bunch of food. And then that's all I have for my two schools. And then Eatonville Sports, as far as that goes, I lost a bit behind on it, but wrestling started not too long ago and I think they're having an tournament soon. Right, I, I can.
Thank you. Thank you for connecting and that's a lot of great information. Appreciate it. That was. Look, you went out for a journey, had all kinds of great tales.
Um, so I finally heard back from Eatonville Elementary. Um, they raised almost $10,000 through their Eatonville Elementary Booster Club fundraiser to help with like various activities throughout the elementary. Um, they had their food drive for EFA and there was over 1,200 items that were donated. Um, some student activities and events, they have a peer meditation program. So it's an after-school tutoring program that helps resolve conflicts like at recess or during school and stuff helps students really like hash those sort of things out. Um, they had a turkey truck on the 25th last month. Um, it was just a fun holiday activity because for Thanksgiving and all that. And then the third grade holiday concert, the choir concert was at 6:30 on the 1st and 5th month. Um, and then for Columbia Crest, all the third, the third through eighth grade teachers were hard at work during their first test interim. And they had, uh, well, they have a holiday concert on the 12th this month at 7:00 PM. It's the band and choir together performing before we get to the holidays. And then they also have a Christmas Carol play on the 18th at 1:00 PM this month. And it's just a play performed by the drama and getting the students more involved. And then us three, we do plan to visit like Columbia Crest, the elementary schools. Um, we plan to visit Warehouser. What's the other school? Yeah, Ware, yeah, Warehouser, the middle school. That's what I was thinking of. Um, and then I do have a little bit more for the high school. Um, two of our student teachers, Mr. Grant and Ms. Renterer, uh, just about successfully completed their teaching courses for being student teachers.
Wow.
For both, it was algebra two and history. And so they technically graduated through their course today, but tom, by tomorrow though, tomorrow will be their last day of the high school. And then we have a selfie drama production from the drama. It's a short drama production highlighting the stress of high school students and coming of age. Eli's in it.
It's so.
It just, it deals with a lot of topics like mental illness, divorced parents, anxiety, just going through high school and stuff. It's on the 12th of this month. And then we do have our winter wishes assembly on the 19th of this month, kicking off students for the holiday season. Um, they, there was, there's a whole like winter, there's a winter wishes activity where students can fill out forms of like little gifts they might want to get for their friends and some of those are recognized at the assembly. Um, it's, it is not, it's coming Friday, but it's the Friday after. You guys, board members are all invited. We would like you.
What time's yours something?
Um, 1:20.
1:20.
What day is that?
The 19th.
The 19th.
19th, 1:20?
Yes.
Winter wishes is so.
We would really like, if you can make it, maybe us getting you involved in like a game or something.
Wear tennis shoes?
Yeah.
What is the most interesting request that you've read so far? I'm, I'm assuming you guys are helping with the winter wishes. Are you in the antiques class?
Yes.
Okay, so what's the most interesting, or is it supposed to be top secret? We're not supposed to.
The like interesting requests of like what to do for.
What winter wish request?
Oh, like the gifts.
The gift. Is it top secret?
I think one of them was like one of those like teacher pointers, like those plastic.
Ah, nice.
It's the weirdest one I've seen, but.
Let's consider it though. That's really sweet.
Yeah, it's like, you know, but um, most of them are like pretty, you know, a red one, a green drink, stuff like that. Um, but the pointer was probably the best one that I've seen so far.
That's awesome.
Um, if you guys can make it and we will, us wanting to get you guys involved within the assembly, if you want to, you don't have to, um, email probably me or Ms. Sturdivan would be good too to email so that I can know ahead of time and communicate so that we can plan what you guys are gonna be involved with. And we can do like a planned introduction and stuff like that.
Awesome. That's very, very nice of you.
I just.
Okay.
Um, so some concerns and feedback from students. So we did. Um, so some concerns and feedback from students. So we did have. A little issue that we did discuss with Ms. Rimmer and we also discussed and had a meeting with, with Mr. Rush. Um, was like the drug and vape use within the student population, the time students are using it, the fact that they're using it at school. Um. It's always going to be an issue, but we would like to bring that down, of course. Um. Just talking about how we can improve the rates of students. Not using that stuff during school. Of course, we can't always mediate what goes on outside of school, but inside school. That's supposed to be like a safe space and we want, we want to help with that. Um, we had some ideas of putting posters up around the school of comparing like different prices, like. Like you can buy a vape for twenty dollars, but the with those twenty dollars, what, what else can you spend that money on? You know, and throughout a course of time, all that money, you know, being spent on something that. Only lasts you maybe a week or two, you could buy a car or buy food, stuff like that, something that's a little more beneficial.
Love that. That's a great idea.
And then we also, we're also continuing trying to continue working on like an anonymous chat room for students to connect with counselors. You know, figuring something out. We, I guess there was, um, there was some sort of program for that at the school, but we're trying to bring something like that back. Um, some leadership updates. We ended up putting up the kindness wall, which we, which I previously mentioned in our last. Meeting. Um, we put it up and a lot of students have been taking the sticky notes and kind of passing them around and stuff. And then. We have an improvement effort of trying to be more inclusive of like the students, like the groups and the staff and stuff. Our equestrian team doesn't really get. Mentioned a whole, especially like at assemblies and stuff. We mainly hear from like our cheer team and our football team and stuff like that. Trying to get tennis, the equestrian team, track, um, all the, the broad array of stuff that we do have representatives at high school.
The chess team.
Yes, we are getting the chess team involved this next assembly. Um, and then some, some staff and students that I'd like to recognize. Um, I did want to recognize our leadership students and our leadership teacher, Dr. Hans Ross, for. Just being so cooperative and really trying to improve the school and get students involved and being there for other students. Um, I'd like to also recognize Ms. Firstgo, Ms. Timble because they're day in and day out, so much, I mean.
That's awesome that you recognize how much they do.
Yeah, they do.
Because they do a lot.
So much. I would say I sit in the office in the mornings. Sometimes at the church go, we'll have like. Five students in there and then a phone call and another phone call and paperwork and all sorts of stuff. Same with Ms. Kimball and they do so much for our school. I mean. They have the answers for practically everything. And then I would also like to recognize Ms. Dorrit, Ms. Bridgeway. Um, they're continuously getting involved, continuously, you know, getting with the students, trying to talk to them. How do we improve with students? How do we improve with staff? How do we improve with activities? They're just always tending to our student body. And I think that's amazing that we do have a principal and vice principal that are like that. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate you. And so, um. We have another school board meeting next week. It's unusual timing, but it is, that's kind of the way it is. So we are going to invite you to go ahead and. We will let you transition out before we start our work study. And while they're kind of transitioning, my hope was that we could kind of have. I guess this is probably closest we're going to get, isn't it?
Yeah.
You could, but I don't want your back necessarily to be to the camera. Is he in the camera right now?
No.
Not right now. Oh, you're going to transition? Okay, alright. How would you feel most comfortable, Brandon? Do you want to swing your table in?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. That way we can really have a good discussion. Around. Bye guys. Thank you so much. Who made these awesome templates?
Um, Jay is going to talk about it.
Oh, good. Alright, they are, then we'll keep it under.
Yeah, but I need better, government issued teams.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. That way we can have more. Alright. Um, I wouldn't consider any changes or additions to the, the agenda. Hearing none, we're going to continue on to our work study. Um, and first I'd like to give our apologies that we are not doing our ELA presentation. ALE, sorry, thank you. ALE presentation Sally Teely is. Uh, under the weather. And so we're going to. Hope that she gets and is feeling better soon and put it back on the agenda as soon as she's up and around. So, um. Thank you for being here with us. Uh, Brandon and Danny and we'll start our, uh, we're studying on policy forty two sixty. And. Do you want, Jamie, you want to?
So. Uh, Brandon and Danny and my team, they're working hard to try to. Get ahead of a couple of things. First of all, there's no such thing as a policy ever finished or procedure that's ever. Has every diet I got in T quest. And uh, we also have a new opportunity where the stadium is being built and we know that there's. That's like I mentioned today, we literally last two days could still go having games on that field if they were completed. There's nothing that really can stop it. And so as such, we. Need to get ahead of that because the, the usage of that field, that facility is going to, it's going to be. Something we have to handle. Uh, and so with that, I think we just to start. With Brandon and Danny just kind of talking about the general procedure. About uh, the use of, of, of school facilities and just how that works. So then. You know, I think that would be great for the board to kind of have a kind of volume of, you know, like. You know, what you're learning, what you're hearing, what you want to hear. You know, what procedures are in place, what would you like to, you know. What are some things that we could consider? Cause in the end, we're hoping that the outcome will be that we're, we have. You know, even better policy or at least ideas where we can teach you policy and procedures.
Um, I guess I, there's so many things that are involved under this um, facilities. Um, process. I didn't know where, what you guys were looking for. We didn't know. I didn't know if you guys. So what we were presented with the changes that OSPI um. Suggests for us to change and that's in the forty two sixty. Um.
The one with the.
Draft on it. Yeah, just to be clear, this is a work study. We are not, we're, we are just discussing, we're not making any policy decisions. So this is our time to really brainstorm together.
Okay, one, one clarification. The forty two sixty policy is WASDA updates. I'm sorry, WASDA. There WASDA policy. That's okay.
Um, and so with that, I guess the only thing we've done with that to our understanding was that. We read it and we understood that that was something that. The changes were made here. So, um. I know that Brandon kind of was just, he had kind of gone through because they're switching. Categories or they're switching from, I think we had.
There was like four categories. Now this is kind of. Looks more like three different chapters. Really? And then how would you kind of break? You know, that down and, and uh. You know, it's basically, it's the school groups. And then, um. And then it would be the um. Nonprofit, right? You have the uh. The non, well, actually the first one there has nonprofit and then commercial enterprise, but the. The school will be the first one. So I don't know. How that would maybe look with some of the groups that have been using. Our facilities on maybe exactly where they would kind of fit in with that. Cause some of them are kind of like, you know, may, uh, like a. Uh, you know, government agency sponsored, right? So. So are you, are you saying that we may have to? Would it, would it, and it obviously is a leading question. These are the recommended categories from WASDA. In your guys' experience, because being a smaller community, we get multiple different groups. Do you, do we need to create? A separate category, like a third category? Or a fourth, you know, I mean, like, do we need to create a different category? So it would be, I mean, is that? Yeah, I don't have it right in front of me, but we did have four different categories. Yeah, I should say the uh, what we're going off now. Okay, okay. And then this would change it down to three categories.
And just for the board to be clear, this is for us to take, we're reading it, we're going to look at it, we'll come back.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, yeah, this is the time to ask all those questions. Um, and then, you know, to report any policy amendments or changes based on. Our, our personal board recommendations. So, okay.
So when it comes to the um, policy and some of the things, I, I think. Whichever way you guys decide to go with the groups, if we all are under the same understanding, where we have, I think a hard time is the one offs that, that's happening. Um, and we just have one child and parent going in to use the facilities and um. Changing maybe what was. Prior not allowed in a gym to now having it, but it's still on our paperwork. Uh, some of the things like that I think are what kind of create a little, a little bit of a hard time. Um. That I think now we might have, now I think as we've been working it for a while, we kind of see where the one offs are, that maybe. We would want you guys to be able to. Have a thought on instead of having to come every single time to see. Uh, like I said, now when there's just one person wanting to use that. Who are we charging? Who are we not charging? Um. What is our reasons for then charging and not charge? I mean, like things like that. I think if. If we understood where, where. Where, and where we're all on the same page, then I think that would help. It seems like now we're starting to get. To where we know. Um. But I just feel bad because it seems like we have to keep coming to you one at a time, when as these new things keep arising, you know?
Well, I think one of the big things that's kind of a, you know, come up and, and it's going to show up with this new tracking. Um. Is who's going to manage and really take care of the facilities when people come in and use them. And uh, you know, it's, it's a. Everything gets expensive and, you know, um. You would, you would like to, uh, you know, I kind of come from the thought that, you know, these are the communities. Buildings, right? And you want, you want the youth groups to use them and you want people to come in and to be able to. Work all the programs that they can. But there is, you know, I see more, this is my, starting of my fourth year here. And on the backside, the maintenance or the trying to keep them clean and taking care of things, having them ready for school on Monday and. And uh, so, you know, bringing custodians and things of that nature brings in. A, a lot bigger expense, right? For the people that are trying to use it. And uh. You know, it's, you, you want, you want to be helpful and uh. Um, have a solution for people. But you also have to take care of the facilities, right?
We also have to let them in and have somebody with.
Yeah, yeah.
An employee with keys or, you know, access for stuff. So there's, there's expense to that.
Yeah, and, and you just can't turn people loose and say like the kitchens. You know what I mean? It's a, it, it's an area that. Is a, you know. People just can't go in and just take and, and then maybe not clean it properly and. And uh, so the restrooms, the kitchen, things of that nature is probably the biggest thing.
Monitoring the use on the turf is also.
Does it say that, that, this is sort of like, you know, what it was kind of, this wasn't, this isn't like, uh, there's no concept we have like what you guys should have brought to the night. We haven't looked at our facilities use also assume a long time. Yeah, and with the stadium coming on, this is what spurred it, right? Yeah, I mean. For sure. So my, my question is, have you guys, do we do anything like, I just had this brainstorm the other day. I was on vacation and I rented a rental car and you. Check it off and then you return it and they check it. Do we do anything like that with like? Like, they have to, I was reading through it, like, most times at night, at least in the past, we still do, they have to have a custodian, they have to pay for a custodian there, usually. If you're a non-school. Non-school, non-school, non-school group, yeah.
Not on school night.
Yes, no, so, so non-school, if a, if a non-school group uses it on a school night, do they still have to? No, not if you, not if we already have a custodian on staff.
He's in a non-school group.
Yeah, even, well, I think even a non-school group, like say if EYSA comes in, um, we haven't been charging them for like a custodian during the week. Really? Most.
Like basketball practice or something.
Okay, I, I, okay, I just know and it's. Still, you might still be time away from their job, but that, it, it, anyway, my question is, though, do, have we ever done anything like where? When that group comes in, they do a check form of what it looks like? And then when they leave, like in the morning, somebody has to do a check form of what it looks like. So we may be able to hold accountable. This is something I was thinking about when our new facilities, it's like, what does it look like? It, it, you're never going to capture everything. Yeah. But at least it's an accountability network, you know, it's something along those lines. I think having a staff on site, the custodian, you know, if the custodian comes in and hey, he puts the bleachers in and there's a big. Spill of Gatorade on the floor or, and that happens quite a bit, right? Um, you know, and, and I'm not saying it's the outside groups. I mean, we, we have probably, you know, we've had kids. Within school groups that have spilled things.
Sure.
You know, so that stuff just happens, but that's why I kind of like to see a custodian on site. So that when people leave. And the custodian can do their walkthrough, make sure all the doors are locked. Make sure things are put up. And then hopefully they're noticing those things when they happen. Yeah, I just meant that in addition to a custodian, that way you're not in the, uh, embroiled conversation of the he said, she said, like, you know, this wasn't here when I was here, when I would, you know. It's just, I didn't know if we had. And that was all, okay, no. Alright, and I know the bean added burden.
So that might. Um, that's something you're looking for, it's kind of an accountability.
Yeah, I, I, well, I'm looking at facilities through. And I was talking to the jam, I was like, what's the carrot and what's the stick? What's the carrot for use that you're onto, but then what's the stick if you're a user of a bridge? And. We don't have a lot of money to continue to. Pour out. For activities that don't take responsibility for a space, whether that be. A coach in our own community districts, that is allowing their athletes, athletes, you know, that's a different process through school. Versus a private organization, church group, whatever it might be. Um. And this has been just an ongoing, even when I was a teacher, like we show up in the morning, PE teacher shows up, something's wrong in the gym, but then the organization, that person, we didn't do that. Yeah. So, so how do you mitigate that? And what's the responsibility on both groups to secure that? To narrow that down where a group can't say they didn't do. I mean, I don't know, there's no sure system and I'm not, I'm not quizzing here. I'm just asking, like, how do we? Tighten that up when this is done, especially we have a grand opportunity to incorporate everything as like a. Hey, this is moving forward as a community. How do we expect our community to behave in these environments? Yes.
Even, even a communication protocol, where this is, you know, where you set your expectations, like. These are where you need to reset things. I was talking to, um, the junior cruisers, they have tremendous amounts of students, like a hundred, a hundred and twenty. And they said they have to sometimes move the cash registers and do those kind of things. So what is the communication protocol so that they? Know what your expectation is for reset up. And it might just be verbal, but it might also be wise to have that in writing.
Yeah.
So that it can be a checklist. And, you know, make sure these things are in the right spot, take a picture, you know, X's or however your staff over there. Um, wants to be put back because I know in the past I had to move those for various events and. It can be tricky to get.
Well, you gotta make sure that they're plugged back.
Plugged back in, yeah.
So the milk doesn't spoil or.
Yes.
And, and that's the question too, is that something that? If we do before for them, does it get added into the cost we charge them in space? I mean, this is my question, like, cause all of those are removals of our staff's time. You know, and I totally respect that and that shouldn't be a removal from your staff's maintenance work to maintain the facilities as a whole. But we also want our space being used. We. The least people we have involved in the chain, the less problems we have, you know? And so what does that look like? That's, that's all I. Yeah. I mean, you know, like. I think part of the problem too is, and I think it's a great problem to have, but you have a lot of people. Oh, absolutely. It's a great problem. Yeah. Yeah. That needs space, that one needs space. Yes. And so you end up, I mean. My opinion would be the commons probably isn't the place. The whole things like that. Oh, yeah, yeah. But we're trying to put people in where. Time works for them and they basically get some, uh. So then you have these little. I, I tell you what, the. I would say most of the time. I think people do a really good job of.
Absolutely.
Of trying to clean up after themselves or, or do things, right?
But just to be clear, I was not saying they don't do it. I was just saying.
Yeah.
As a person that has participated in those things, sometimes it would have been really nice to have the checklist to say, you can do this and this and this and this. It's like our vacation rentals, we have to check out. Yeah.
And we definitely can come up with.
I feel like we have discussed wanting to have like gym rules. So if you are, people who are using it for basketball, you have a gym rules, you can sign up. So you know, there's no food in the gym. There's. No soda. And I think that that is something that we had talked about working towards. But. It's a matter of getting. I, I feel like our, our policies and everything for a while have been pretty vague.
Yeah.
And everybody had different ideas. Um. And ran off different, I have a key here, I don't, I have this. And so I think now that we've been trying to establish some of the main things, everybody doesn't get a key. We schedule for you. We make sure a custodian's there. Nobody needs keys. We schedule for you, we make sure custodian's there, nobody needs keys. Um, I think that got established, and then we moved to the next thing is like what are we going to be enforcing? I think we just kind of needed to get some of our main rules, that way now we can say, oh, you're using the basketball court. This is the rules for our basketball court, and you know, initial online or whatever, so I think that is something that we talked about and wanted to work towards, we were just still trying to get like the big pieces.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, I, I, yeah, you guys, I, this is not a, a comment on that, you guys, this is awesome, um, I, I just it, it goes back to, I was, we were talking earlier about like where is the, how do we as a district, and you guys talking to us as a board, and us talking to Jay, and for you guys running the job, how does the system work? But as a community and as a, as a district, where do we draw the line if we don't allow someone to use facilities? Like, and so where is that? Well, I don't know, I, I have no idea, but like, what, what what is the, the process we have for that? So it goes back to like, when they're, so what, so if a group is using the, the facilities, like, uh, boy scouts, I, I don't want to get the boy scouts, sorry, anybody using boy scouts, um, I just, you know, or a group that uses it repeatedly. They, they go through their process of filling out a form, do they, do they fill out for each facility in season, or is it for the whole year at the time?
And I think it might be worth to go through like an A to C, like, how does it?
Yeah, that would, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Okay, so the way it starts is that they will go on to our website and they sign up as an organization.
Okay.
Okay, and then, so they cannot schedule anything until I approve the organization. So I go through and look, who is it, what are they doing? Can we say approve? Boom, now they can go in and they can request the building, the facility, the times, and if they're asking for anything else, um, yeah, like a piano recital, maybe we use five, um, can we have the piano moved out?
The risers.
Yeah, or whatever it is, and so they'll request that and then we can go through. Um, they have to give us their insurance, if they are a sport that does, um, uh, well, most of the sports, so like soccer, basketball, football, they have to do, they have to give a sign up paperwork that they've given out against concussions and the sudden cardiac arrest. Um, so what I've been doing is, as I get those, I can attach that on to our system, so it shows. And then what happens is say their insurance is about to expire, I get an, the insurance is about to expire, so like EYSA gives me one, or
That's one, yeah.
Whoever gives it, Booster Club, it's good for a year. Some are just short term, it's good for two days, so I put that information and then this this school dude will let me know, hey, it's one month away from expiring, or whatever it is, so when it comes to, um, like insurance or basketball teams that are playing two seasons, I don't make, I don't require them to give me another set of the cardiac or the if it was another team or another, they added stuff, although I was not thinking about adding new coaches, which would make sense to me for every, like when the seasons change, because I did have some say, hey, we added two new teams, two new coaches, can we go in here? So that does make sense to me, that if they gave it out at the beginning of the season, now we have new coaches, they would not have. So.
Yeah, that was, that was common, because if we, that was one of the things I was gonna ask, is like, if we're not doing each season, so I don't like the burden on us, but what if, but I was interested to hear, you get notifications if their assurance is about to expire, because I was more concerned like if someone groups insurance expired mid-year, but they're approved for the whole year, like, how do we know? Like?
Yeah, and we don't, we don't do approvals for the whole year, so the way we do approvals is per season of the high school sport. Okay?
Okay.
Or this season, um, of the high school sport, so we do it in three different ones, we don't do four, because I know middle school has four different seasons, but so we'll do like the fall season, as soon as I get all the high school schedules or their practice times, we get whatever. Then we can go in and look up and say, okay, um, this is how many people want to use it. And then we also kind of have to figure in, not everybody knows the system, you get a new team, so I can tell them all like, hey, everybody gets two days.
Yeah.
If we have extra time, I'll open it up, but if a new team comes in, that third day can be given to that other team, because we have a lot of people who get started a new team and they want to use a field, and just because they didn't know to turn it in, we so it has worked out great, um, because we've been able to add different teams during the seasons, um, and everybody's, you know, fine with it, everybody is understanding of that now, for the most part. Um, so, so then what I did tell them is you can submit your stuff in advance, because then what I do is, as I know the season's coming up, I can start seeing if there's an overlap or a problem, then I can call everybody ahead of time. Hey, it looks like you guys both want it this day, and they'll adjust times or whatever, and then we can just go ahead and approve that next season.
But every season, they're turning in the new RCW protocols for concussion and the heart, um, the CPR, right?
If it's a new team, if it's a, if there was a new group coming in, but like EYSA, um, when they, when they did basketball, yes, but sometimes it'll overrun into a different season. When they do soccer, now they'll give me a new one for soccer, because that's a new set.
Yes.
But for like the girls' basketball program, they're practicing fall, winter. Yes. But, but it does make sense, because like I said, if they added new coaches, which they just did.
Then they need to.
That's a question I would have, uh, as a bonus for you guys, to clean it up for you, to help you guys. It, looking at it from a management standpoint, is it easier for you guys, if it was just something they had to do every season, no matter what, so it doesn't carry, so you don't have to, you know what I mean, so there's just a blanket rule that those things are due each season, no matter if it's a repeating group or not, or that more work?
Yeah, no, that, it's actually not work, they email it to me and I just, it takes two seconds to attach it. Um, so to me, the, some of those things, when you just have it, then it doesn't leave space for those open.
That's what I'm saying, it would make a crystal clear rule, that's all, so those are the stuff that we're trying to fill in, you know, like, as we look at this, right, like, what what is an effective measure that would be crystal clear than communication to the people out there too, is what is needed? Cause again, you know, I remember when the high school was remodeled, we had all these rules, like you can't hack things on the walls, and you can't do all this, like, well, how are we gonna do that for, you know, that's why you could do about the stadium and the facility, how do, how do we, how do we do that to make sure that these last?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and some of that stuff kind of like goes away.
Oh, I know, it naturally, that's human nature, yeah, that's no question.
All of a sudden, it's like, so I would like to see some of that come back a little bit, but you, you want to try to make it as helpful as you can for people to be able to use
Hundred percent.
The facilities, but and then being on this side where you have to either go out and do maintenance or cleaning or things of that nature that, uh, then like I said, a lot of people do a tremendous job, but there still becomes some areas that you have to go out and you have to clean, whether it be the restrooms or, you know, uh, uh, and just the facilities in general, but uh, it's, sometimes it's tough.
I think having, back to, I'm stuck on that checklist, on the, on the checklist, if there is a checklist given to the coaches to, to just check off at the night, when, when they're releasing the kids and just checking off, because even if we do have a custodian on staff, we know darn well that the custodians struggle to get their work done.
Yeah.
Let alone getting back to a gym that was used that they've already cleaned or, and had ready for that team to come in.
Yeah.
You know, so it just doesn't happen.
Okay, and I think in addition to that, I think that's awesome, but it's also consistent.
It's, yeah.
So every organization is being treated with equity, the same, like consistency.
And I think that's what helps us, that's what I was gonna say too, how you're saying, how can we keep it so we're upkeeping? Is when we are not giving exceptions to somebody because they have always done that.
Yes.
Because they're this team or this, I think, because then people are like, well, if they don't have to, I'm not gonna do it, how are you gonna make, and they do come with me like where in line twenty-seven did it say, and under six, and I'll have to say right here, oh, okay, and then I'll move to the next thing, so I know that consistency and keeping it the same across the board, to me seems like it makes things much easier.
Well, it helps an organization to lean, put pressure, or not pressure, follow through with their expectations for their staff as well, because it's part of the process, right?
Yeah.
Um, cause, you know, having to help out with other, or done other nonprofit, you're helping run a group, and you, you, you humans are, well, you hire a coach, that coach is coaching, they may not care about a water bottle, and they sign off that they do, and I'm not blaming, I'm just saying that I was a coach, I mean, you know, this stuff goes, um. But so, I mean, that's another positive, the biggest thing, yeah, the biggest thing is, you know, thinking of too, this one, I like what you're saying, is in terms of like any system that is independent of, if you leave, or you leave, or we leave, what is the system if someone comes in? Especially a new coach, you were talking about, say, get a new hire, like, here you go, you know, this is the rule, so that's kind of what my brain's thinking.
What, what about, too, there's, you have your head coach, and then that head coach is sick, and they're just calling a parent to say, hey, can you
We can't control that.
Coach tonight, or something, I guess, I guess maybe, yeah, we can't control that, but maybe maybe just having, like, the one thing we could control is the checklist for their shutdown for the end of the night, or whatever.
It helps, yeah, any, anybody that's not consistently charged, they would know what they need to do, to check on, that would be great. And they could just be there on a clipboard.
Yeah.
Hard to do, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be concerned a little bit about having an organization do that checklist versus our own staff of our building. In other words, when I fill out a rental car, I mark everything, babe.
Well, I'm just saying, there's gotta be a checklist that they know what to do.
Oh, yes, yes, I, I was running down the idea of who's checking what's wrong and not wrong. I would, I'm going, yeah, I'm going down the, already the rabbit hole, who I'd want to have do that, but I also don't want to take time away from their other duties, which goes back to costs and stuff.
Which, which I would say, like, if you have, some nights, we do have, like, say junior cruiser wrestling or the girls' basketball, but they're in that same gym for all three hours, so it's easy to say the custodian stopped in at five thirty and stops in at nine, but when you have three different people using the gym, then you have the custodian going back and forth, cleaning EES or EMS or it's hard for them to set a timer and be like, so it's somewhere in there. It kind of seems to me like having the checklist
You're right.
On the wall, like you were saying, and having each team check out, the custodian then maybe is just checking one time and saying, yeah, I don't know where something didn't get done, but instead of having to do it.
And in our current, uh, procedure, it does say additional rules and regulations are we, we located on the facility use form, which is great, we can also locate them and, and then we could add to that, located on, in the facility, and then sponsors are responsible for compliance and enforcement. So that is in our current procedure, but I think.
In the, sorry.
I forget what's in procedure policy, with a P with that, okay, thank you.
Yep.
And it's page two oh four, and it's that last, very last paragraph.
So bringing it back to it, what is the what's our process for denying someone use eventually, or?
Yeah. What would be the, I guess what you're asking is, is there a threshold, is there a threshold that, yes, of
Yeah.
Eventually lead to somebody being just.
I'm not blaming it on you guys, I'm saying, I don't know if we've had that conversation.
Or, you know, is there, do we need to talk to our, uh, risk pool or our insurance company and say, what is the threshold? Um, and what would
Yeah.
The place where somebody wouldn't.
I mean, clearly something easy, like if you don't have a current policy in place, you know, liability policy, then that would be. I would say most of the people you have a conversation with them, right? I mean, um, the one thing that really drives me crazy is, uh, you know, like down at the elementary, a lot of people want to park in around that bus loop.
And, oh, yeah, I've done that.
And people park right over the sidewalk, right up onto the grass. You know?
People pull in
I know.
Onto the field, because you don't want to unload their gear.
Oh, yeah, they bring dogs.
We put toe signs up there.
So we have toe signs up, and that'll probably be the next step when people do that, because I've walked right up to a car, being able to look right through and the back window and out the front, and you're looking right at the toe sign.
And they park in between our toe signs, so toe sign, toe sign, two cars parked right there. So soccer season's coming up, and it's a
Do they count that though, or do we need a sign that says do not park here?
I wouldn't think you would need a sign there because it's a sidewalk.
As a business owner, I have to put signs up for
Yeah.
Pick up your garbage, or
But we have.
Rent your feet, or you can, you know, we just don't.
If you go by the middle school, where the kitchen is.
Hmm.
Okay.
That's.
I would have been one, yep. That before I worked at facilities on the weekends, parks there.
Absolutely.
But because it says, because it says, uh, parking for
Absolutely.
For maintenance, right?
Or kitchen deliveries.
Yeah, kitchen deliveries, um.
Which aren't always on the weekend, but I, I think the big frustration there is that we do have, uh, I think it's for the custodians, when they come out to take the garbage, then there are people parked right in front of the garbage to the gate, or if they have to leave, they can't get out. Because they'll normally pull in there and then there are cars that stack in behind them.
And, and.
We had a car actually parked on the
Yeah, well, I know we're chasing a ride right now, but I also would say that the bus loop gate is never closed on the weekend, going around either, and it's like, so that just automatically.
Might I tell you what happens when we close it? Then the staff then the staff drives on the sidewalk to the portals at the middle school. On the grass, on the sidewalk, to the portals. So if this is, they, they say, well, then we should all have a key to this. So.
Well, see, there, there's an example, though, again, of like that, okay, so, I know, I know, so there's an example, though, again, it goes back to what I was just saying about what are the limitations of when we remove the ability to use something, because that's a blatant, so we shouldn't, we have a gate, you know, I, I, I mean, that goes back to that level of, and that's my question is, is, and I, and I'm not, you guys have that, this is a support from us too, is when I, when I ran a mountain bike club, for example, um, we had a coach that was constantly crashing one of the facilities with our student, with our kids, no matter what we did, well, our, we kept to be able to get insurance, because as long as you're willing to pay more, didn't matter, so the facility, the youth group did not care as long as we had insurance, but where does that escalation get, where no matter what, if we keep crashing it, we can still use it just because we have insurance versus what's the ethical line we have of where that triggers? And so, you know what I mean, like, and, and I don't have the answer to that at all, but, but I'd rather have our own line than be emboldened to an insurance company just because you're covered, you know?
Yeah, I know, yeah, I know, I think, uh, I, I don't think there's anything you know, in here that says, but, but I think that like, we've, like I said, for the most part, since I've been here, everybody's been pretty good to talk to and I think work with, um, we'll send an email about where people are parking. Sometimes it lasts, sometimes it doesn't, and it's
What?
Yeah, and that's, and that's parents that are, you know, for the most part that are doing it, that not, not necessarily are part of the organizations, they're not in on that email.
Yeah.
And the, the organization's probably not individually talking to the parents, they're saying, oh, I'm not gonna park there, but then
What we could request, and this is a management thing, so this is a you thing, I'm just giving you an idea. We could ask particularly EYSA or those other organizations to maybe produce some cones or signage that they could put in those areas where we would prefer for them not to park. And that could be something they could offer, like, we're offering our facilities, and it would be really helpful if you had cones, etc., that you could put up that said no parking, that they would be responsible for putting up when their events are there.
Yeah.
So I do know, like, um, last year there was an issue with parking, um, and we worked with whoever was the head of that group, um, and this year, during that season, I, I don't think we hardly ever had one or two, I think maybe one or two times we had a con say, hey, but they made it clear to their parent, like, you're gonna get towed.
Yeah, most of the time.
Whatever, we don't tow anybody.
The organizations are, yeah, or the groups are very understanding and, and, uh, but that would be our next step, that if if, alright, if you guys, then we're just gonna not let you guys come down here and use the field. But nothing's really gotten to that point yet.
But we should have something in the policy that states that there is a, a line, and, you know, if it's.
I would want to still run that by legal, though, I don't, because I don't want to hamstring us either, because it's still a divi- division between our district rules and EYS, or, or church organization, or whatever else is rules, we call. So Danny, keep going, so then?
Okay, um, so where were we? So they entered their information, um, so now what I've started doing is um, if it's an event, so I have doors scheduled to be unlocked during their practices. Um, so the, it's mostly the middle school is the one that's just, it's used from five thirty until nine, so if I know there's events going on, um, which is most of the days, I, I schedule the doors and I tell them which doors are gonna be unlocked. Um, that way no one's having to worry about key, if it's a warehouse, there are a lot of times, um, it's not used as often. So our custodian will go meet them at the door, let them in, um, but depending on what they're using, if it's a weekend use, now we can have the doors unlocked so they're not propping, parents can come in and out for games.
And you just remotely can do that now?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll like talk about, we have a tournament coming up this weekend, I'm like, okay, what doors do you want open and what are the times? Yeah, yeah. So we'll like talk about which we have a tournament coming up this weekend. I'm like, okay, what doors do you want open and what are the times?
And then you turn off the security codes so the alarms don't go off.
The doors will just open like a regular.
Yeah, and then the interior alarms are also remotely. That's awesome.
Yeah, the alarm is off and one once that door is unlocked.
Everything is available because I. I hate that stress of. You know, running train, you get the right place and do the right code. Now that's great. That's awesome.
Yeah.
The new system is really nice that way. I mean, it really is. I'm not thinking makes it.
So we we just scheduled that for them. We talked to them about, you know. Our, we usually have, um, our custodians, we. I think we've kind of mentioned to them, we want you to do a walkthrough, at least, you know, if there's a banquet, sometimes if there's banquets, I message. Everybody saying, don't forget there's a banquet. Can you leave a broom out? This is the doors that are unlocked, so we're not propping yours or whatever it is. So. Uh, once it's all put into the system, then weekly I can just go in and see who's coming in and.
And most of our gyms, so like when people are in there till nine o'clock. Most of those spaces are kind of, that's what. Should be getting kind of taken care of at the end, like that's one of the last things that the custodians are doing.
I I guess I guess my my own really. Uh, question, and it's not a question, I don't want this to be top down. I want to know, and you guys can spend time to talk and think about this with your staff and everything else. And it's not just about the new facilities coming online, but that obviously heightens everything.
Yeah.
What would you like to see a support? From board to Jay down that, uh, in a procedure? To help? If there is anything? With your processes to 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 make sure that that they're up well from outside entities. You don't have the answer right now. Think about it, but you know, if you could get a list or backers or just if there is anything that's different than what we talked about, because that's really what. We're talking about, right? Is how to make sure they last as long as they can is fair to the community and I've always.
Concerns that you see, but you you think we, you know, hey, I think this would be a good idea.
Well, and and the truth is, like, we set the policy and then you guys design the protocols.
That's great. You're right.
You and Jay designed those protocols and, um, that's the management side. We will. Pick, you know, we will, and and then we approve the fee schedules. That's the other thing that the board does. And that's one question I had for you as I'm looking at this.
Oh, sorry.
Um, but real quick, I'm not going to talk about the fee schedule other than I want to make sure that the explanation of charges, it talks about. The custodial rate, um, the per diem for them, and I want to make sure that every year that changes because every year. Our, I would imagine our costs are going up, so we want to make sure that's accurate for DM.
So I asked Lindsay and asked her, where are we on all our numbers? Um, she said that we are low where we're at at forty one fifty two with overtime and benefits. She would put the number more between forty eight and fifty, and that's still, when I'm looking at other districts, it's still cheaper. A lot of them are fifty five sixty an hour. Um, she said our, I asked about the kitchen staff as well. She said the price that we have seems appropriate for kitchen staff. And then, um. Under the auditorium. It says that we have to have an I T person whenever we have it. We've never had that, but. Um, if we did, she said we're way low on that price too. So when she's, she recommended more of a sixty dollar an hour range.
So I would imagine, I'm just going back to past practice, when they're talking about using the lighting, it's typically somebody from the drama club. And the drama, um, instructor, what do they call them? Sponsor, the school employee sponsor, whatever. So if they're in that back room, I can see making sure that they have somebody there, but if you're not using the lighting and the sound.
Yes, we've never really had a, yeah, we've never done that, but she did say that our prices were. Way too low on that. She said more than sixty for that.
It's the same way of setting it, but then, uh, back to what Rhonda said, kind of, um. Just subject to change yearly or something in the policy like.
Well, I think it would be every year you update those. You have to update them every year based on the contract.
Yeah, yeah.
Because you don't want it to be stagnant, like you want to refresh it every year.
Yeah.
And it should, it should happen when we do all kinds of, like, that per game should change.
Um, and I know, um, I, I mean, I'm sitting on the floor, but I know Danny did a fantastic job of like. Reaching out to. Uh, I don't know how many different. And giving, you know, costs on what people are charging for their gyms. Or, um, and I'm not saying that we have to go down that road. I'm just, it's, it's very good information to look at and and things are. You know, um. Pretty expensive.
Honestly, I was really happy we were having this meeting. I didn't take it in a kind of thing. I was excited because I feel like we needed to have all of this. Cleaned up and in order before our stadium comes in because then it's our, then it's going to be go time and trying to make it at the last minute. What if we say yes to somebody one week and then the next week, no, it's like what you said, you know, so for me, this is, I'm really happy about this. Um. But and I just think, um. Yeah, I think if we're running it across the board the same way with everybody, somewhere in here, we talked about not charging E Y S A. Um, I saw a certain amount or something like that we didn't charge. Um. I just wanted to throw it out there. Every one of our teams and groups and clubs are similar to E Y S A. They're not trying to make. Money for, you know, for themselves, but they're almost all a hundred percent Eatonville kids. So we've just been kind of. Running it the same way across the board on that, um, because they all are a hundred percent kids for the most part.
Yeah, and I, I'll.
Are you saying like not? Charging because E Y S A gets a charge or should we start start charging E Y S A thing?
I think for sure on the weekends, if they, we're losing money when we pay for the custodians and so we. Um, we are charging for non-school night, so for weekends, anything like that, we are charging. Um. I'm just saying. Whatever way we run it, if they are all, you know, a hundred percent kids, then we run it.
Uh, as we look at this, and I'd like the board to take a good look at the updated proposal of the policy, um, that's something we can consider. Under the school or child related groups, we need to, you know, think about that. Um. So that's something we can look at. And then I want to also make sure that, um, I understand and I appreciate that. Uh, our community supports our levees so that we can support the pools. I just want, and. I think this is a fantastic deal and it's a bargain to rent that pool, but I want to make sure all of our employees' costs are covered. I don't necessarily want to make money on the building. I don't want to make money, but I want to make sure our employees' costs are covered. And that's a really low price. I'm not certain that it is. So I would like to have. Have you take a look at that fee schedule, just to make sure employees' costs are covered on that. On the per hour.
And just to part whenever you guys are looking over stuff, we added the general rules and regulations, whatever is in black, that's what we currently have on there. Um, I added four things and like whatever it is. Um, that I was hoping there's some, like, we have the no driving on the lawn on one of our, on our paperwork somewhere, but it's not in our rules. So like I added that. I took the, I took the verbiage off of our other paperwork and I added it to here. So what I was hoping maybe on those kind of things you guys would consider, but like we have on our rules and regulations. Appropriate space is required for specific use. For example, baseball is not to be held in the gymnasiums.
I saw, I read that and it's in.
But we have, and so am I, are we going to keep that? Are we gonna start allowing it like?
It does say the extra, that there's extra costs, um, related to that and extra insurance.
So I just highlighted stuff in the pink for you guys to consider and and I kind of feel like. Our general rules, I wish maybe they were organized a little bit better because a lot of people scam stuff. We had like some of the main things that they really care about on the top, just organize a little better, but I don't want to try to reinvent the wheel. So I just added the four things I think. Um, and I'm learning how to add some of these things to our system that we have. So the same way they. That it shows they have a signed up insurance, it'll, I want to be able to attach a signed up, you read the general rules and regulations. So it'll also pop up on on our facility.
Absolutely. They should be agreeing to abiding by these.
Part of the agreement.
Yeah, absolutely.
And when they did it, um, with paperwork, they work, but now that it's online, they don't necessarily get this, you know, so I'm. I'm learning how to see how I can add this on to that place because they're saying that they agree to it, but if they don't actually have a paper in hand like they used to.
Honestly, I wouldn't be opposed to say them saying, you don't get the key, you don't get whatever until we have. We physically sign this because I agree, a lot of people just go click and they don't read it. I mean, honestly, that's on them if they don't and we hold them accountable, but we still have to be consistent and, um. That's probably a universal problem.
You know, kind of talking about the like the football field, you know? Um, I know there's a lot of places that, you know, somebody shows up, they unlock the gates. Let people in and then. And then there's got to be somebody there to manage the restrooms and then at the end of the day. End of the day. Somebody has to make sure that that's locked up and there's not. You know, some of you can spit sunflower seeds all over the field and all things of that nature.
And and from my perspective as a board member, my my voice, if that's a route that we. Choose to go, this is my true sense. I don't know if I can control this and if I can go the world my way, it would be perfect, but. If that's a route we choose to go where. Yes, we're opening up the facilities. And if we have to have somebody come and do that check at night, we need to pass that cost along, in my opinion. And and I hate to say that, but I'll say it a thousand times, I pay taxes for a police car, but I don't get to go take it for a spin. So it 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 that's. That may be rough for people to hear, but tho- those are, those are real costs. And so, um, and it comes out of our coffers for education. In some ways, so it it's it's not about if limiting the use of the field, it's about making sure that we're taking care of that. And not just the field, but the field is a different entity because it's outside. Your your janitors aren't. Outside policing the field at night, you know, so what does that look like? And that's a whole different, yeah, but that that's all it's. Because you're right, those are all I've got, but what's that look like then?
I think that's again, the checklist would be so nice, just having something there.
Absolutely.
You're walking and you're checking the bathrooms before you lock up and you're making sure it's. Decent, you know, um, yeah, on, um. Twenty eight, you said, uh, as far as the cash or credit cards, is this still correct regarding to no path for credit card for paying? What is your thought on that?
We take, we, I mean, I I know that we've taken, um, credit cards, yeah. I don't know if anybody comes in to pay with cash or not. They pay, they come in here and pay, um, but I know this said like money orders and all that kind of stuff. Um. Now it's easy for them, they can stall, they let and they bring the card over the phone or they can come and pay it. So I just didn't. I wanted to make sure that was fine to be changing that.
Yes, yeah, I think we need to continue to accept checks and the orders and all that because. If you're a nonprofit, you have different ways of paying for things, but we absolutely should be accepting credit cards and any other cards. It's, you know, yeah, that's, yeah, let's come into service. Some, yes, twenty eight needs an update, a refresh.
Is there an issue like cash coming in? I know, because that's handled, then it goes into the state.
Yeah, they they have protocols here, I mean, they deal with that. And at the high school as well, so as long as they're following their protocols, that's.
And for facilities, they only compete here.
Yeah. Yeah. And you guys don't have to manage it, so that's good. Um.
You do have, though, under the procedures, guys, you guys do have the exception scheme. Baseball stuff can be made by the manager, facilities are super independent, so it's still covered. I mean, we've had to bring in indoors before. I mean, that's.
Well, our teams, yes.
Oh, that's, I see, okay.
Yes, with our teams, yeah, in the spring, um, all our teams use a gym, track, baseball, fast pitch. They use it because it's, yeah, weather. Football uses it in the fall sometimes if it's too smoky, you know, so it they, I get for our school teams. But. Are we going to continue to? Allow like baseball to come in and have a. Club team and which is either way, I mean, times change and things change and now they do that. And they have things made for, right, but I'm just saying, but they do have, you know, my husband plays fast pitch, they have certain balls, certain bats, they have different shoes. So I get that times have changed. I'm just saying. It's on our paperwork, so are we gonna keep that or not? Then it makes it easier to be like. Yes, and then we make the rules again. You can only use this type of bat, you can only use this type of ball or whatever.
There should be, you know, recommendations, but that states.
But it's just because I was going over some of these and realized that we had a bunch of old ones or things that maybe were outdated or I don't know.
Do you think that's too hard for us to manage if we do allow? A a club to, you know, say do that, that we're expecting them to have a certain kind of bat or a certain kind of ball.
I don't think anything's too hard to manage if we, if we know what the rules are and we are giving the rules and we're being backed on that. For me, I don't feel like it's. Hard, hard to manage it. Once we have like, everybody's on the same page, this is what you want me to say. It's easy to then put that step into action.
Well.
Do we have something that says, okay, if that's not followed and they're like, okay, you're.
How do we deny?
You're you're denied for six months or you're denied for a season.
We don't have anything and I think that kind of goes to what you were saying with how do we decide to turn someone away or where do we draw the line?
And I agree, Ron, that's a, that's a. Liability question. Want to make sure that we don't, a risk because I don't want us to be held accountable for somebody else's, which goes back to like. My suggestion in some of this would be, you know, we don't suggest the gear they need to use. You make it broad, say indoor appropriate use equipment for that sport. And then they get financially responsible if they break anything based on if they use the wrong equipment. I mean, I would prevent. My suggestion is don't make a list of approved equipment.
Right.
Because it's like, if you make a list of approved equipment, once something is out there, yeah, so. You they need to know what their own equipment is for indoor use. I mean, and then you hold them, that's my two cents.
Accountable if they did break a scoreboard.
Well, we're not using indoor equipment.
Well.
Yeah.
But what if they are?
So we don't, so, I mean, we were lucky that it was just in the elementary. We didn't have any scoreboards, anything like that, so. Because we had discussed that, like, how does that happen? So we didn't have anything on the walls there. We were lucky on our one. Um, with soccer, when they did inside the high school, we did talk to them because I was like, okay, you got scoreboards in there, so they're fairly new, those. Newer ones we got and they're expensive. And they said they had certain balls and it would have been fit. Yeah, that, so I mean, but we didn't have anything.
Dents from the walls or in the ceilings, those are all things we have to take into consideration. And or you have have to take into consideration and because it's your duty to protect and maintain the facilities. And our duty to make sure that we're being responsible.
If they're not responsible, if they're using the proper equipment, but they are responsible if they're not using.
They have, they're the ones, these two right here in our policy are the ones that approve whether or not they go in.
Yeah.
So, but like I said, they use the wrong equipment, but they say that they use the right equipment.
Well, and and then in a lot of cases.
I mean, I've had a kid break a TV in my classroom with a colored pencil. You know, just looked at and shattered the whole TV in the classroom. So I'm like, you wouldn't expect that. It's like.
Well, the policy states that they're responsible for any damage.
Okay.
No, yeah, the policy does state.
And that's part of like what we've been trying to do to like. The facilities. Uh. With when we have, uh, custodians in the building. You know, um, if if there's not going to be somebody in that building, we try to like switch them off to work. There are going to be custodians, somebody there to help be able to kind of keep an eye on things and just make sure things are. Um, the way they're supposed to be at the end of the night.
Uh, for me, I think, you know, I'd like to apologize for stepping into, Ron's brought up a couple of times in a good way that, you know, I I'm still learning the line between. Our role as policy and procedure as, you know, I just want to be able to help, but by no means trying to. They had what to come up, but that's between you and Jay. And and so I feel like I muddled that water a little bit and I apologize, but at the same time, I, you know, I appreciate the conversation and. Trying to get to know like what is, I appreciate, I thank you for.
What this is all about is you sharing with us.
Yeah.
You're sharing with us what the the procedures are, which is awesome, which also is really important as we look to amend a policy. It's important for us to have this information so that we can make sure that the policy aligns with your goals and so, um, yeah.
I just wanted to thank you, because I I it it's a reminder to myself as I learned this role about. The dynamics, you know what I mean? And, yeah, and so, and you and you guys are doing great and I appreciate it. Um.
Well, and I know everything doesn't. You know, always get probably taking care of the way it should, um.
Humans are the champion.
Uh, well, I mean, you know, well, no, like, like the custodians are. They they got a lot on their plate and so, um, you know. You know, they're like, say, with like with the old bathroom, I didn't really have anybody scheduled for that, so it was like. Hey, talk to the evening custodian, can you go out there and clean that? You know, it's just adding something on to their plate and it's, and then something else maybe isn't getting as much attention as as it should.
I do believe that, um, a consideration as I look at a new, um. Or, oh my goodness, I've said it a zillion times, paid rate, a rate, sorry, that is one of the things we have to. Or, oh my goodness, I've said it a zillion times, paid rate, a rate, sorry, that is one of the things we have to approve. I would like to see that U S A, any nonprofit, any student-based that's non-school. Is paying the costs of porta potty cleaning or bathroom facilities cleaning, all of those things, again. I want to have our facilities open to the public, but we cannot go in the red for that and I think that if we're. Consistent and everybody does it and they know in advance.
Yeah.
I think that that's fair and I don't think that that's an extreme request or cost.
Like just said, at least like, we have the facility use, but is there a cleaning fee like something?
There is, uh, on the facility use, it does state, if you're using the kitchen, then you have to pay staff a certain amount, but.
Custodians.
Custodians, but my understanding is you just said, U S A, if they're using the, or any organization that's using the field that has not been paying for custodial fees for the bathrooms. Or what about porta potties?
Yeah, no.
Those are expensive.
Those are really expensive.
Very expensive.
We have them in all schools.
U S A does bring in their own porta potties for their season, they do bring in their own, they call and ask and they park them by ours that we have on. So they're, they're, yeah, really great about.
But then our arms lock?
But, no, no, so. But I think like if you, if if we're speaking all facility use, like you think of like, um, Fourth of July was my first Fourth of July here.
Oh, yeah.
And, um. If you think about like, if the town donates garbage. But it ends up maintenance comes in on Saturdays or the following days on the weekend and. It's cleaning up stuff too, so.
The last couple of years I've had.
Before it was like, yeah, that we could donate things, but so I think if we're going right with sports, we're talking about all of the communities.
Which, and you know, and this is one of those things where when, if we have a committee of fourth year committee, that's why you guys need to sit on it and say from the very beginning in the planning stages. These are our board. This is the board fee schedule, that's the word I was missing earlier, and the requirements and I don't think. I think it's reasonable to say our custodians are going to have to come in and this is how many hours and this is what it's going to cost. We're not going to charge you for the field, this is, you know, those community things, we don't, we don't charge the facility, just for the cost of any employees that.
Yeah.
And Mr. Brower was really good about reminding us at our last facilities meeting, hey, get on your radar, we have May Day coming up, Fourth of July.
You've got, you've got to be at the tail of those committees to give people that information because if it's changed, you know, and people have been here. Generationally and they've done the same thing for so many years, then we need to say, you know, just a heads up. It's with this interior budget, this is something we need to consider.
I would, I would strongly consider too, and and this is just maybe me that don't like added. Fees on samples, but. I don't, and I don't know what your internal data is, if you have data that we have staff that has to. Clean after, actually even during the week. And it's taking away from their other duties, what does that look like? That that, I mean, it should be an added cost of of the of the being done. I'm, again, I'm looking at it once, if I was like a janitor, I'd probably go in and clean the floor first and then let me use it and then see how bad it was afterwards, but that's just me. You know, because I'm just that way, but.
Experience, that's how it's been.
Yeah, I just, it's just something for you guys to think about, I mean, it is not, I I don't like added costs on our communities and our students, but. I also don't like, we already are thin on staff and if we have staff diverted for things, what is that cost? I can answer that, you guys may know that based on your feedback from your own staff, I have no idea, so just something to, so.
Yeah, I don't, I I think as long as, you know, like, like, just for an example, say like, the middle school gets moved a lot, right? As far as in the evening.
Yeah.
So we have an evening custodian down there, that should be one of the last things that they do. Is they go through, they take care of the two gyms and then the back bathrooms, the other bathrooms. They shouldn't be using. Putting people in the commons. I need to talk to the custodian to make sure those double doors going down the hallways are lost.
Okay.
Because we've had people wandering down the hallway and then maybe using those bathrooms or, you know.
Yeah.
So there's, there's things that I need to get cleared up on my end. But, yeah, we try to kind of keep everybody like in the gym and then using those back bathrooms.
As long as you guys. If you guys ever feel like it is pulling time away from their general duty, like, you know, that sounds like for you to consider.
And this new policy proposal, it says when those facilities are used outside the regular school hours. Regular school hours or when the district incurs extra utility, cleaning or supervision costs. A fee schedule established by the superintendent will be charged to recoup those costs and I think that that's, I think that's very reasonable.
Well, that's another thing that we've been trying to do too is like, get our cost breakdowns on. The gym or the pool or, you know what I mean, so.
Because, and aren't students paid too? Like, are there students paid for, um, swimming?
Yeah, those are all employees and that's why I said move on to make sure that we, and you know, there's. You, you, if you're a lifeguard, you can't be out there for a long time, it's not like you can just have two kids, there has, there's a rotation that had a safety rotation and all of that, so. It is such a blessing to have that and I don't want to do anything to keep the community from having use, I just want to make sure that. We're covering our costs, at least the employee costs, we will never cover the cost of the pool, ever, it's. It's a gift from our community as they vote for the levy and we're grateful for that, but the employee costs, you know, to make sure.
Yeah, I guess, as we start to wind down, I've been. Really appreciative of both Brandon and Danny for the hard work that they do, I think what they do is. They're always striving to figure out how to balance the use. To our community, our voters, you know, go for these things. With that cost to the district and how to just make sure we manifest or how to make sure, make sure we balance that, but also. Make it so it's a sustainable model that will, you know, again, keep our facilities up while also allowing access to our community. They're doing things like bringing other, they're studying other school districts, they're also, we actually have in, you know, athletic directors. Who have a new, who have a facility at like, we never had artificial certified and never had twenty-four seven three sixty-five. Facility and, and so getting ideas coming in, getting consults from them and. And, and you know, and so those are the things that I think they've done well and we 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 meet weekly, by the way. To, to try to, this is one of, one of the items that we do, but. One of them, we're trying really hard to find that right balance, like you said, Travis, between. Is it something that encourages more cost or if it's, or reasonably. Our students, you know, would be able to do and, and if it is, then we're looking at how we, you know, probably. How we set that schedule for our users. But yeah, I think it's, I think I'm really proud of Dan and Brandon.
Thank you guys for being, you guys, I mean, from what I've. Known and seen, just from my short experience here, that you've been just definitely good stewards with. With our schools and.
Hope so.
Financially and everything, you're very good stewards, so.
It's one of the hardest, it's one of the hardest positions in those school districts around facilities because. You know, the community, the public own the facilities in the sense of, you know, as voters, taxpayers, but at the same time. We, we are an organization, we have our own organization, it is a business to run and we have to figure out how to make sure it's responsible use. And it's fiscally sound. Because it does come out of such a somewhere.
Yeah.
Especially as our budget constraints are. Growing that we have to, so I really appreciate the boards. Next to, um, yeah, I'm keeping that into, into, you know, I guess, in our minds as we move forward is. It's a, it's a delicate balance that I'm trying to find, so thank you.
Thanks, guys. Good.
Thank you. Appreciate that, um, and we look forward to looking at our. In the future, I don't remember which month it is, but we have a facility, we'll look at your ten-year plan and then we'll. Going forward, yeah, maybe something like that, so we look forward to that interview and thank you for the work you've been doing on the safety committee as well. Appreciate you gathering for that, okay, so let's wind up this board meeting by leaning on into our superintendent comments and board comments.
Yeah, so, um, as, so the teaser was, yes, you can see this, the Oregon snowflakes. They were prepared by students of Miss Erin Myers, who is not only our teacher at the middle school, but also runs an advisor. And, so we, we appreciate the, that is the core, you know, for our meeting. I've been really. I've been very, very impressed with our math committee, so this is not just an adoption committee, this is looking at practices, this is figuring out how to best deliver. Deliver math to our students and so when they meet, they not only are looking at potential curricula to adopt, which we know are long overdue. And if we are really going to. Try to, if we really are going to. Focus on these goals of academic success and appreciation for life, then we really are going to have to have. Curriculum that will keep up with what we're being tested on and, and the thinking skills that will prepare them for the future. But at the same time, we know that curriculum are just tools. That in the end, that it's how that's delivering, it's the craft of being a teacher and so I've been impressed with. With that, and you'll hear more about that, just as you did with our E L A adoption was, was on. It'll be certainly open up for public to see at some point too, as we start to kind of narrow it on those. Those adoptions or curriculum that seem like they're, makes no sense. And then finally, kind of last but not least is. Just, you know, I know you asked me for an update on the stadium each time that we meet. And the latest is that there has been a lot of work out there, even with this sort of. Weather that we've been having and be real honest, I try to wander out there every day, as Cassie knows. And today, for instance, and yesterday, I was out there and, and there are, there are no puddles. There are no puddles, which is unbelievable when you get more than an inch of rain and and they have, and it's with that drainage system as it is. The infiltration system that actually has absorbed, so it was kind of, I was kind of using it as a test, like. Like if it's going to rain this much, this hard. For this long, what's going to happen, you know, are we going to be, is it going to be able to absorb this much rain? And, and it has, so I'm really proud about that, so currently, as you may have seen on our social media posts. The, the rug is getting rolled out, the turf is actually being rolled out and so you can see it's a forty line yard line, you can start to see the. The lines and you can see it's manufactured such that now we'll start to put that together, I will say kind of a funny note that there were, maybe funny. There were five, there were some construction workers out today that are laying the turf and you have to, it's just like a rug, you have to get it. You know, close together and there were five of them that were going like this and the wind came and it's. So they almost had a kite and so they said, yeah, that'll be enough for today. But also with the stadium, it stays prepared, we'll be getting our, we'll be getting our support speed by in the stadium prepared, our. Not pure blocks, but our. Yeah, I can't remember any of that, but anyway, the blocks that are going to go right behind this.
The retaining wall.
Thank you, yeah, the retaining wall, but those have been ordered and sold. And then just kind of an exciting thing, the stadium should be delivered. We believe around the twenty-second of December, and it's coming up in Texas, it's getting very close, we have all of the. The foundations, the placement supports, also the cement or the concrete's been poured for the lights. And you'll start to see columns go up. As, once they lay it all down, then they drill perfect holes and 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 put inlay those and then the lights are going better. So, yeah, the conduit's been laid and and has, has also been covered and. It's just really unfolding really, really well, so, anything else, Brandon, you want to add about this, this out there?
No.
Yeah, I think that's, those are, oh, the scoreboard should be coming in tomorrow.
Well, that's fast.
Twenty-eleventh, so to these attempts, yeah, so tomorrow, as well as we potentially could get the, the class of twenty twenty-five. Flagpole delivered a little bit later this, so. Things are starting to come and they'll be, they'll be there for when they're need to be put up and so.
Yeah.
And it's a forty-foot pole?
Oh, you did wind up getting one, big one.
Eight by twelve flag?
Beautiful.
It'll be lit by the scoreboard.
Yeah.
It'll be lit by a light on the scoreboard.
Okay, there we go.
So, and I think with that, again, thanks for your direction and helping us, again, one of, I think, one of the more challenging. Parts is figuring out the facilities usage and so once we get the direction from the board. When you give us the what, we'll do the how and we'll make sure we, we are the good stewards of our public's money.
Thank you for that. Great, board comments, I'm gonna start, you pull it. Okay, Karen?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, and it was. A joy to have the kids tonight come in and play and just to hear them be so well spoken about their teacher and. Ms. Danielson, I don't know how she does it, because, well, and anybody in that role, but she's amazing with bringing kids with. Almost zero skill in the beginning and then they end up with something gorgeous within just months, you know, so it's. It's, it's fun to watch her and I, I, I always say that, you know, between her and her husband, there's a power team, so. We're lucky to have her and. Yeah, it, everything, I'm just so appreciative of where we're at right now and. I'm on a good trajectory, I've, I've enjoyed being able to talk and just like. Kind of throw ideas around on what we think, you know, might be helpful or. And and just get your guys' feedback too, so we know what might be concerns, so.
I'll just real quick, I should have said when the students were here, well, for obviously, thank you guys, thank you, this is, it's great to. Still be involved in the district and. Feel like more like a thought partner process, you know, I know it's officially not as what we need to do and it's still a great.
Yeah, that's.
It's a great give and take, yeah, it's good, and it's, and we're all on the same page trying to help kids, that's awesome, but. I just want to say something kind of cool, guys, as a board, Mrs. Sternman invited me in. Once a month to meet with her board reps and her when they fill out their questions and their problems and to help. Them learn the system or processes, so me being the board rep from the high school, it was great and Eli undersold himself because he's done a great job and then I get. They're both having a eon and to the community, anyone else, the kid at the high school, these two kids sat in the high school and were. Questioning, the admin in a good way about best ways to help solve vaping problems among their own peers. Others, they really want to solve the problems and and it was really, really cool. It's great to see and both of them coming from places where they've moved around and it's so, you know, and being part of that. I mean, the young man is in the play and when he remembers interviewing, it's just, it's phenomenal, so I want to thank Amy for that as an opportunity and just to let you guys know that's. I didn't share that with you guys on the board, it wanted to be a secret that we. Meet about their concerns, so we're trying, trying to teach the kids the process of. Of organizations, but yes, systems, systems, and so. Uh, yeah, or at least teach them that it's not just as simple as, you know, there's, there's not simple answers all the time and how do they, and what ownership do they have on their own? And I want to thank high school again today too for bringing a couple of, you know, parents in to talk about. Running start and AP, I just advanced, I was trying to really improve academic situations for students, so I appreciated that a lot today, so.
That's awesome, thank you, thank you very much for today, but for all the time and that is a big, extra heavy burden. When the field and everything's done, you're going to feel like you have so much.
Free time?
No, you will never have free time, but there will be a heavy burden that will be lifted and I just want to express my gratitude for your willingness. To step up and and all that you do. I was at our little conference, I was asked to be on a panel of scoreboard presidents and they asked me like, what have you learned since you've been a board president? Everybody got to offer one thing, but what was, what's the one thing that surprised you that you learned as you became a board president? And this document right here is a good example of why I said this, what I learned is how essential a really good executive assistant is. How it makes everything better, you, you see this document that our students are working from, Kathy developed this. And she helped really create the protocols where these students could learn, if you look at our board calendar, Kathy. really create the protocols where these students could learn, if you look at our board calendar, Kathy. Uh, if you look at all of those things, so many things, and she's the face to our community. So that is one thing I wa, I just wanted, I said that to everybody it was, but I wanna express it to you, my gratitude, that I have learned really, um, and you probably feel that way about Danny, right? But your executive assistant is vital to you and I feel that way about the board, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
And it's a lot, and, and it's a sacrifice for your family to share you with us, um, we appreciate them being willing to do that as well. So, um, I wanna recognize you, thank you to the beautiful artwork from the students and the teacher who was thoughtful enough to send it our way. That's really wonderful, um, I am so looking forward to the holidays and listening to all the beautiful music, it's been wonderful to have those presentations. I'm grateful to Mrs. Danielson and her continued legacy and we get to, and our children get to can be the beneficiaries of that, so thank you, um, boy, this has been a long meeting, but a good one, so thank you so much for all that you do and with that, hearing you, nothing else, we're gonna close, meeting closes at eight fifty-one.